Melody, I'm gonna walk down the hall here for a second and help Lee out with yours and Nick's help to make sure he gets on here.
Absolutely.
And we're still waiting Brenda, correct?
And Mayor Lee Jensen is on now. He'll just be graduated up to a participant when you call upon his item.
Okay, very good. And that is I M E, correct?
Correct, yes.
We're still waiting for Mayor Pro Tem, correct?
That's correct.
There we go, warming it up. Hi Brenda.
Hi. How are you?
We're doing well. I think we're probably ready to rock and roll.
We are.
Alright, very good. Well, welcome to the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. It's virtual today, obviously. July 14th of 2020. Before we get going though, I'd like to have the Town Clerk Melody Schuler read in a statement, please.
Sure, thank you Mayor. I just wanted to go over a couple logistics for those participants who may not be very familiar with Zoom. This is a reminder, your main controls are located on the lower left-hand side of your computer. These are your audio and video controls. Please make sure to mute yourself when you're not talking and to keep your video on as we are streaming live to YouTube. Next, I wanted to review some guidelines as to how board members will be participating in the meeting. The mayor will be calling on each board member individually to provide comments and votes. If you would like to speak at any time during the meeting, please raise your hand. I know that sometimes with some of the backgrounds, your hand may get lost, so just bring it up in front. And then also, just let me know if you have any trouble with your technology, if you get kicked out of the meeting, as we need to suspend the discussion until you will return. So next, we need to take the recall. Please indicate if you are present. Mayor Ronald Pappas.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Brendan McMillan.
Present.
Commissioner Anne Simpson.
Present.
Commissioner Tracy Westlet.
Present.
Commissioner Pedro Maury.
Present.
Thank you. All members are present. Mayor, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Very good, thank you. With that, this meeting is now called to order. What I'd like to do next is we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a brief moment of silence afterwards. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good, thank you. Okay, next up, if we could, we're going to go to the adoption of tonight's agenda. If there are no changes to the agenda or any changes suggested, please raise your hand. If not, then I will look for a motion to adopt the agenda as published. Not all at once.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Any discussion? Being none visible, roll call vote please. Commissioner Wesley.
Aye.
Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem McMillan.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we're adopted on the agenda. Town Clerk Schuler, I understand that we have, we have no comments pertaining to any items on the agenda, is that correct?
That's correct.
Very good. And we do have some comment on the general public comment side, is that correct here?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Alright, we're gonna move down to the consent agenda. Like to look at that and if there are any changes or suggestions to the consent agenda, please do say so. If there are not, then I'm looking for a motion to adopt the consent agenda as published.
Make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as published.
Very good. Any discussion? Seeing no hands raised, roll call vote please. Mayor Pro Tem McMillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Westlet.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. At this point, we're gonna go down to recognitions. And we have, the town would like to recognize two members of our community, and I believe both of them are the Waxaw Rotary Club, Larry Hook and Mike Weber, and for the volunteer work that they've done, setting up all the flags and staying in the gazebo, all the pressure washing work in the downtown area in the last couple of weeks. So the presenter, I guess, is Max. Max, are you on there somewhere?
It doesn't look like he's on here. And it's basically straightforward, like as they identified in the agenda.
Okay. If Max, I see someone else is on, Elise is on.
Hey, sorry, I'm using Elise's account.
When do you show up somewhere?
I was using it for the Main Street Advisory Board yesterday. Sorry. Good evening.
Well, we're on your item, we're on your item for the recognition for Larry Hook and Mike Weber. So the caller is yours.
Thank you. The town would like to recognize Larry Hook and Mike Weber with the Waxaw Rotary Club for the volunteer work of pressure washing and staying in the gazebo in downtown Waxaw on East Main Street. And they did an amazing job, so we have certificates written up for them and we're ready to send it to them.
That's outstanding. That's great. Are they on the call here anywhere, you know?
I'm sorry?
Are they on this call? Are they on the?
It doesn't look like they are directly on here. They might be watching YouTube.
Okay, very good. Well, we all appreciate that work. It looks nice and clean out there. It's a lot of effort to do that. And we certainly here as a board want to thank them, very much so, for doing that work. It's probably hot out there. And again, sandblasting and power washing, that is a great deal of work to do. It's not unnoticed. It's very good looking work. So both of you guys, if you're listening somewhere, we do appreciate you.
Thank you.
Very good. Alright, at this time then, I'd like to go to presentations, item E. I think Jim, I'll let you do the introduction and we can go from there.
Yes, thank you Mayor. So we have Lee Jensen, the Union County Planning Director with us tonight. And he's going to give the board an update on where the county is on their comprehensive plan update. In the process of that, it's been a real pleasure in my time here in Waxaw, working with Lee to this point. And certainly enjoy the relationship that we have and looking forward to continue to do so. Lee?
Lee, welcome to the party.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
And I always like to check. I just wanna make sure everyone can see my screen.
We can hear.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Alright. So I will go through where we are right now with the county with our comprehensive plan update. As many of you are aware, back in late August of 2019, we started a process to update our comprehensive plan with a fairly large kickoff meeting over at the Agricultural Center. I know many of you were there. The Board of County Commissioners wanted to hear from all the town councils about their ideas for growth and what they thought about development in Union County and what some of the major issues were. That kinda started our process and wanna kinda give everyone an update on where we are. So I will jump right into it. So what is a comprehensive plan? I know you guys already know the answer to this question because you, I think you guys are a little bit ahead of us in updating your land use plan. So you've probably seen a similar slide. But our comprehensive plan is gonna be a guide to the county's future. It will help us to inform current and future decision makers, you know, where we are now, where we want to go, how we intend to get there, and who will help us along the way. It'll help us define our biggest assets and challenges. It'll help us focus on strengthening our economic development efforts.
Lee, hang on one second. We are not seeing your screen. Do you have a separate slide right here with any bullet points?
Yep. Is that better?
Um, so right now, staff is sharing their screen with you. Yeah, so if you'll just click in there, you'll have control and you'll be able to advance forward. You need to click.
Yeah, I am. It's not.
Is it not moving forward?
There it is.
There you go.
It's a little slow.
And you'll see the controls are down on the left-hand side.
Okay.
They're a little bit hard to see.
Alright, I got you.
Go back.
So you guys are seeing what is a comprehensive plan?
That'd be correct.
Okay, good. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
So, again, help us define our assets and challenges. Our focus, our economic development efforts. It'll provide recommendations on the type and character of development that's appropriate in different parts of the county. It will help us, it'll recommend and help us prioritize different policies, key projects and resources. And will help us determine who are some of our implementation partners will be. And that will include some of the municipalities. It's also gonna provide guidance to the county in developing and directing future capital budgets. So what is our vision? This was really the first step in the comprehensive plan. We really, once we kicked off the plan in earnest in January, we jumped right in. We wanted to set a vision for the plan. So what is the overall vision for the county? I'm sure many of you have worked on the vision statement. It's not supposed to be a huge statement, but it's supposed to capture a lot in a very short statement. So you can see the vision statement that our coordinating committee developed between January and March. This did go out for public comment in March, and there were some tweaks that we heard back from the general public. And we incorporated that. And as you can see, our vision is, Union County in 2050 is a place defined by connections where local governments work together on targeted issues. There are clearly communicated plans for growth and infrastructure improvements, and resources are committed to their implementation. Union County is a growing community where there is increased capacity to address education, transportation, water, public safety, and other multi-jurisdictional issues. High-density residential retail and employment options in certain designated areas. Convenient accessibility between retail, residential, and employment land uses. Complementary development patterns along corridors. Preserve rural character outside of water and sewer coverage areas. Recognition and support of agriculture is a key industry in the county. And enhanced community connections for arts, agritourism, and parks and recreation. So again, I talked a little bit about our process. We really started in earnest in January with our visioning and trying to come up with a good vision statement. So all of our committees and our coordinating committee ultimately put together that vision statement in early March. And we had several rounds of community input. We had some community meetings and feedback and some tweaking of that vision statement. And that vision statement was ultimately adopted by the coordinating committee in early April after those community meetings were held. So once that vision statement was adopted and we knew what the community was sort of looking at for the overall vision of Union County, we jumped into our scenario planning process. And this is kind of the meat and potatoes of the plan. And this is what we're working on now. As you can see, we're in July. We are currently having, our three community meetings were last week. We do have our survey up and I believe that's, I know it's been shared on the county's Facebook page. And I know a lot of the towns have also placed it on their website for folks to go and take a look at and take. And we really would like your feedback. There are three distinct scenarios that the coordinating committee has come up with. Once we receive feedback from the public, those will be tweaked a little more. And a decision ultimately, probably sometime in August, maybe early September, will be made by the coordinating committee on an overall scenario. It will likely be a combination of at least two of these scenarios, I believe. After that's done, you can see we'll get into developing the land use map, developing some of the tools for implementation strategies. And ultimately get community feedback on that through three more community meetings, probably in the November timeframe. And then hopefully in December, our coordinating committee will make a recommendation on an overall comprehensive plan that includes all of this. And we'll send that to the Planning Board of Board of County Commissioners. And we're hoping by early 2021, this will go to the Board of County Commissioners for discussion and ultimately approval. So why should we update this plan? As you all know, Union County is growing and all data points that we will continue to grow. So the ultimate question is, where do we want the growth to go? So this map on the left kinda shows, these are new dwelling units. It's two years worth of data. And I'm sure as all of you recognize, the western side of Union County is growing very fast. So that's where that growth is going right now. And I know I've talked to Jeff many times about this, and I think you guys have done a great job in your land use plan update of looking at this as well. Union County has an imbalance of jobs and workers due to people driving out of the county each day for work. And you can see that referenced on this map. This is kind of a ratio of people that live and work in Union County. And you can see on the western side, that ratio is pretty low. Only about 12 to 35% of these folks actually live and work here. So a lot of them are driving into Ballantyne or South Park or Uptown Charlotte. So we got a lot of people that are leaving, not a lot of job opportunities for them to stay and work in Union County. And the third bullet point here, you know, obviously growth impacts infrastructure. And when we say infrastructure, we're not just talking about water and sewer. We're talking about schools. We're talking about private infrastructure, power, gas. It impacts everything. Roads, transportation. It impacts the environment. You have increased stormwater runoff, increased flooding, as we've seen with some of our past storms this winter. It affects businesses and it also affects agriculture. A lot of fields and former farmland that gets developed turns into something. And some of those farms go away. So this is why we need to update our plan. And who's developing the plan? The Planning Department has actually facilitated the process. We have a long-range planner onboard. I'm sure most, many of you probably know Bjorn Hansen. He is leading on the process to develop this plan. We have a coordinating committee. Usually about 10 residents come to those meetings and they oversee all phases of this process. And the coordinating committee is advised by five resident-led focus area subcommittees, which are these sort of ovals that surround the coordinating committee. All meetings are open. We hold them each month and they're open to the public, so anybody can attend. We were having those meetings virtually. There is still a virtual option, but we are back in person as well. Our subcommittees, we tried to identify major areas that we thought were impacted by growth. And we have an agricultural subcommittee, environmental, developer and business, infrastructure, and then a citizens committee. We also have a committee that really doesn't have a seat at the coordination committee table. But we have a municipal and county planning staff committee. And we wanted to sort of create that, not so much so that staff could give input on the plan, but just so we could have representatives from the county and municipal planning staffs that could get together and talk about the process, so we could share feedback or things that we've heard through our coordinating committee with municipal staff. So hopefully they could then inform the elected officials in those towns what was going on. And then, you know, maybe some feedback the opposite way. And so far, that has worked really well. We've been, we've been pretty pleased with that subcommittee. We've gotten lots of good feedback there. So again, I said we have three distinct scenarios that have different combinations of regulations, land use patterns, and new programs. So really, the point of this slide, I'm not gonna read all these, cuz you can get bogged down in a lot of words. But really, it's about trade-offs. You can, some of these scenarios have very light regulatory authority and allow some development, kinda like we currently have taking place. There are some scenarios that may be pulled back, some of the land use recommendations a little bit, but they don't have a lot of new programs or regulations in place that help identify, that help address some of the key issues that have been identified so far. And then there's another scenario that really looks at land use and then looks at some of the major issues that came up throughout the process and identifies programs that may help address some of those major issues that we've heard throughout this scenario process so far. Again, at the end of the day, likely you'll probably have a combination of things that are put together that form the plan. But we'll have to see kinda what the coordinating committee comes up with as they go through this scenario planning process. So, you know, we always wanna start with where we are now. And this is the existing land use plan scenario. So this is a land use plan that was adopted in 2014 by the Board of County Commissioners. I'll kinda go around the, you know, around the map here and kind of explain what some of these are. A lot of them are self-explanatory, but you know, these gray areas, we just wanted to show this because these are all municipalities and the county doesn't really have any land use control in those municipalities. We don't make land use decisions there. The, these purple areas that you see along Highway 74, some of it's kind of underneath this gray here, down 601 and out Highway 75. These are employment corridors. And these are intended, not as, you know, we wanna strip out, you know, the entire corridor with a bunch of industries. But it's supposed to be a generalized idea that in these areas, you have good access to roads or, you know, especially on 75 and 74 in Old Charlotte, you also have access to good roads and rail. In some areas, such as the airport, you have access to good airport facilities. So you could have a location dependent, you could have a variety of employment uses are appropriate in some of those areas. Again, the green area, this is Ag, so this is our agricultural area. The predominant existing land uses are low-density rural residential uses, working farms, and forest lands. And under the existing plan, these areas were slated to remain very low-density residential or agricultural. The yellow areas, kinda these areas in here are the, in the more populated areas of the county. And they're for single-family residential uses, so individual houses on individual lots. Overall density should be no more than two units per acre, depending on where it is. If you're closer to Weddington or, you know, in these areas in Wesley Chapel, you should be closer to one. As you approach these orange areas, which I'll explain in a second, you could get up to around two units per acre. The orange areas, again, these are intended to be near commercial nodes or along major corridors. And they're identified for a range of residential land uses, residential land uses. Mainly apartments, townhomes. Increased density. And obviously utilities would have to be present for those types of uses. You can see these orange areas in the 2014 plan are rather large. You have a pretty big area around Waxaw and Indian Trail and around Monroe and Winkett. And then finally, these dots that you see all over the map, you see some red ones and I think there's some blue ones scattered around here too. These are commercial nodes of varying size. So some of these are community centers, some of them are neighborhood centers, and that just kinda defines. And that just kind of defines how big they should be in terms of square footage. But again, those nodes are located at key intersections and are identified for future commercial use. So again, this existing plan, it was flexible. It recognized that there were going to be higher residential land uses that wanted to locate in Union County. And that reflects those areas being close to water and sewer utility coverage areas. It makes recommendations for small pockets of, of unincorporated Union County that's surrounded by municipal areas, which reflected the loss of ETJ for many municipalities a few years ago. And it offered some predictable land development. The county would process rezonings for new development by referring to, to the previous map for guidance. Low taxes and what, what that means is, is that that 2014 plan did not really anticipate any new programs that were associated with that comp plan. So, you know, is it, is this the initiative such as the short water line? The hundred thousand dollar annual commitment for transportation projects that we currently do, those would continue. But, but this scenario, this existing plan didn't really anticipate or doesn't anticipate any new initiatives. And again, and this bottom one, support for agriculture, this is a theme throughout every scenario. The county is, is always going to support and advocate for agriculture as a main industry in Union County. And one of the main things we heard from our ag board or our ag committee was that they would like some advocacy for broadband internet in, into rural areas. They really need connections to help support their industry. So, so this would include some, some advocacy, again, no dollars, just reaching out to people to say, we need this. So the next scenario that our coordinating committee has identified is called the management scenario. These, these names were, we had a hard time coming up with, with good names for these. This was a, a name that was suggested by one of our, one of our members and it, it kind of stuck. Again, the gray areas are towns. We kind of wanted to point that out that, you know, we don't really have a lot of control as far as land uses go in the towns. The purple areas, the employment corridors carried over. Our coordinating committee liked the idea. They recognized that, that, that Union County does have that job imbalance and they wanted to, to keep avenues for employment locating in Union County open. So those, those made it through. These dark green areas, again, the agricultural areas, they stayed. Obviously Union County wants to support agriculture and they actually got a little bit bigger. Down around Mineral Springs to the east and a little bit to the south. That was defined as single family, and then there was some, even some, some orange, some mixed residential at a high density land use pattern. We heard from a lot of feedback from the committee members and from the general public during our visiting sessions that that wasn't something that, that they wanted. So, so our coordinated committee really pulled that back. And you can see that agricultural area really got expanded, especially around Mineral Springs, south of Monroe, and then around Marshville. Again, the single family residential, it carried over, but it also expanded a little bit. We, we heard a lot of folks say, especially around Wesley Chapel and Mineral Springs. And, and even, even to an extent around this kind of area here in Waxaw, that high density residential wasn't something that should probably be in the unincorporated part of the county. Maybe it was appropriate for some of the towns, but, but not so much in the, in the unincorporated area. So we really, the committee really pulled that back in, in these areas and same around Indian Trail. Again, the orange areas, that higher density residential, they, 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 they did keep a few. And they're very targeted, mainly around major intersections. And really the idea was that they combined them with these commercial nodes. And the, the committee's idea there was, it was almost like an exercise in placemaking where they really wanted those areas to be mixed use where it is unincorporated right now. It, it could, it could be an annexation, it could be a county project, but they really wanted that to be sort of a mixed use project and not, not sort of happen piecemeal. So you could really make a nice, a nice development that maybe had some commercial in the core and it's sort of radiated out from there. But you can see those are, I think there's only two left on the map. And those were ones, one is near Waxaw and one is at the corner of Newtown and Providence. And then again, I really want to kind of talk about these, these light green areas. We, we heard a lot from folks that live in the towns about doughnut holes. And this is an attempt to address doughnut holes. We're calling these transition, transition zones. And these are areas that are currently county jurisdiction. And the idea here is that Union County would not support any higher density in any of these areas that are completely surrounded by towns. We would look for developers in those areas if they wanted increased density to work directly with the towns and, and try to annex and, and do that through the town and not through the county. I, I think that's been a big issue here lately. I know that a lot of developments that have gone to the county commissioners have been in these doughnut holes. And we've got a lot of feedback that that's probably not a good idea. So this is a, this is a land use component of, of the management scenario. Next, again, just some, some brief bullet points about it. It is regulatory in nature. It reflects the land use plan and a set of regulatory changes to manage growth. The proposed changes to development would affect where new subdivisions would be supported. But designated commercial areas, some of them would be the same as found in the, in the existing land use plan. Again, the employment corridors remain the same and they did not change. And the county would continue to support and advocate for agriculture. Again, you know, had some major changes in, in the land use plan. It really pulled back the mixed residential. It proposed that new category, the, the, the transition zone in those doughnut hole areas. This does not include any programs that, that would require tax increases associated with this plan, such as building new parks or adding extra money for transportation projects. Again, we would still maintain our hundred thousand dollar a year commitment for transportation projects, but we would not, we would not build upon that. There would be some potential increased stormwater controls, but that would all be done in-house through Union County. We have, we have a stormwater department. Basically this would beef up some of those stormwater rules to better match what a lot of the towns currently have. And then it would require, or not, it, one, I, I keep saying require. It's not necessarily requirement. These are options that are in this, this scenario. New homes could potentially have to have a well inspection before they're given a certificate of occupancy. This is directly related to a major issue that came out during the plan development for unsafe drinking water from wells. We had a lot of, I'm sure many of you have probably heard about wells being contaminated with, some wells being contaminated with arsenic, manganese, lots of other stuff that's, that's not good for you. And there, there are ways to test these, these wells and they, there is a test at the county right now that, that's done when you dig a well. It's just kind of backwards. The, you get the results from your test after the certificate of, of occupancy is issued. This would actually require the test to come before the CO. That way you know before that CO is issued, if you have potable water. And this is honestly really more in line, just talking to environmental health and our building code folks. This is really more in line with, with the building code actually calls for. All homes have to have a source of potable water and potable water means it's drinkable. So we would just be saying you have to have a well test and you have to have a clean well before you get your CO. And again, support for agriculture. Again, this is the last scenario. This is the advancement scenario. This land use plan, as you can see, is exactly the same as the management. We heard from our committee members and the public that they were relatively happy with the, with the land uses that had been laid out in, in this plan. Really pulling back a lot of the higher density areas that were in the unincorporated part of the county and really having the county focus on, you know, these agricultural areas and advocating for our agricultural community and looking at, at, at developments that may happen in some of these more rural areas between some of the towns. So this land use scenario and, and the land use pattern under the advancement scenario is exactly the same. But some of the ways to implement it, it's what's the major difference. Again, it uses the same land use plan, but includes revised regulations as well as advances initiatives to implement the overall plan. Again, this is the same bullet point you saw before. It bring, it kind of quells back the higher density residential areas. It introduces that transition zone. But it also includes some new programs. And this reflects input from the community for responses on issues such as, again, that unsafe drinking water was one of the top ones that we heard. Probably number two was transportation. And we also heard, this was kind of interesting. We heard a lot of talk about connect, connectivity and connections and alternative ways to connect to things. And that sort of led to the discussion of greenways and, and potentially parks. So, so this recreation, this idea of the county participating in, in recreation kind of made it into some of our programs. And these are some, some bullet points of some of the initiatives that are included in the Union County 2050. Increasing transportation investments from our current level of about a hundred thousand dollars a, a year up to about five million. This would, this would come through the potential of a corset sales tax. Again, that, that would have to be something that the commissioners approved to be placed on the ballot. And it would ultimately have to be approved by the, by the voters. And it was actually, it, it was discussed at the board of commissioners meeting last night, if anybody watched it. It wasn't specifically related to our plan, but there was some, uh, uh, the idea of a corset sales tax discussed. So I, I, I think it was, was ultimately pulled off the agenda, but there was some discussion about it. The potential to build partnerships with municipalities to build new parks, trails and greenways. Again, that, that would require some funding level from the county and the ability to kind of build those partnerships with, with the towns. And that's really something new for the county. Right now we have really just three parks. We have Kane Creek, Jesse Helms Park and Fred Kirby Park, which is over in Lake Park. This would, this would be a, a new thing for, for Union County. Again, increased, this was a carryover from, from the last plan or the, or the last scenario. Increased stormwater regulations to reduce the intensity and runoff from new construction. The, the idea here is that, that we could, you could have increased regulations, but the idea here is the potential of even creating a program to actually own and maintain some of the stormwater facilities. Honestly, that didn't score very high on, on our survey results. New regulations scored relatively high, but the county creating a program was about 50/50. In addition to the well inspection at CO, this could potentially have mandatory well inspections for sales of both new and existing homes, basically to inform potential home buyers of the status of, of drinking water. And kind of to go along with that, we would continue to fund initiatives to address unsafe wells, which would include the short water line extension program, which, which is extending water in the areas of the county that have these unsafe wells. But honestly, that's going to, it's expensive and it takes a long time. So is there something that could be done in the interim to help folks that are on unsafe wells? And this would create the, the potential of a grant program, maybe a 50/50 grant for people that did have unsafe wells to have an in-house water filtration system in their home to filter out those contaminants. This was something that our environmental committee really, really liked. And, and they sort of identified this as something that, that they thought should, should be in, in this advancement scenario. Establishing a task force to identify strategies to address litter. And again, support and advocacy for agriculture in Union County. And this one expands a little bit, including committing resources to expand broadband internet into rural areas. So not just advocacy, not just going out and telling people this is something that, that our community wants and needs, but actually providing some type of resource, whether that's right of way or, you know, going out and buying a right of way for, for these lines to be run or actually providing money or some incentive for these companies to expand broadband in, into these rural areas. Again, this is not a, an exhaustive list of, of the, all the issues that they've identified. If you go and, and take the survey, you can bring up an Excel spreadsheet that actually shows every single issue. It shows how each plan addresses that issue. And some of these, some, some of the issues even have a, a generalized cost associated with them. So I encourage everyone to go out and take a look at that survey. It, it is an in-depth survey because this is a very important issue. So give yourself about 30 minutes to, to, to take it. And we want people to be involved. I should have probably thought about taking the slide out before I, before I sent it over, but I, I, I didn't think about it. Because these meetings, obviously this was last week. So these meetings have already happened. But we are available. We would like to present to community groups. Obviously I've worked with Jeff to provide this presentation to, to the town. We're also doing this in many other towns across the county. But any of you that are on any other community groups, Rotary Clubs, anything like that. And in fact, we're actually, I think, one day in early August, we're going out to a homeowners association to give this presentation. So if any of you guys on the board are in any groups and you want us to present, just contact me and, or have Jeff contact me on, on your behalf and we'll be happy to try to set something up. But again, you can also attend a subcommittee meeting or a coordinating committee meeting. They're open to the public. We would be happy to have you. And if you come, please add your email address to the sign in sheet so we can continue to communicate with you. And that is my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thanks, Lee. I think that was really informative, the information. Is there a way that we could maybe get a copy or we could send over the schedule to Melody so she could send it to us? Or we can put it on our town page for those events, those meetings?
Yes, yes, I will send those over. So, and, and the meetings for the scenarios unfortunately have, have already happened. But the ones coming up in November, when they happen, I'll certainly send those over. And I'll send over the schedule for all of our committee and subcommittee meetings as well.
Great, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Any other, any questions for? Given that, I have one real quick, Lee, is I'm kind of curious as to what or if any aha moments have come up in these community presentations. I know they were during the last week, I was not able to get to them. But I'm curious as to how they might compare to some of the meetings that we've had internally or in our town about our plan.
You, you know, the, the biggest one that, that we had come up, not, not so much last week during our, our public meetings. We have so many people that are on our various boards. I think, I, I think our, between our coordinating committee and subcommittee meeting, I think we have 64 people that, that are on a committee. And we, we have a list of And we, we have a list of them online and you'll see them when I send them over to you, but they, there was really a big cross-section of Union County. So I think we're actually getting a lot of feedback through those committees. So we really didn't get surprised at our, at our public information sessions, but one of the biggest surprises that I got, and I alluded to it in the, in the presentation, and I think it made it in here because it surprised everyone in the room was this, this idea, and maybe it was just us being naive because we, most of us grew up in towns. But this idea that, that, that the agricultural community really needed that broadband internet access for their business. And it really, once we heard it, it was an, it was, we were kind of like, huh, that, that really does make a lot of sense, but none of us had ever thought about it. And it had never, a lot of these things have been in previous plans. If you go back and even read the, the county plan from 1968, which, which we've got a copy of, and we kind of, before we started this, it took us so long to get started because Bjorn and I sat in, in the conference room and we, we got out the 68 plan and there's like a plan from the seventies and several from the nineties. And we, we read every single one because we wanted to understand sort of the history, where we came from. A lot of these issues have been coming up since 1968. But that was completely new. Obviously broadband didn't exist in 1968, but that was something brand new that we had never heard and never thought about, but it made a lot of sense. And that's why it really made it in here. So that, that was really our big aha moment.
Well, that kind of follow suit. I mean, everything is self-connected these days, even, you know, their machinery and equipment is, you know, getting some signal from outer space that it needs to run.
Right. Yeah, we, we actually, that, that came up in our presentation. They, the ag committee asked for some folks from, I think it was Sprint and the North Carolina Broadband Internet Department. So it's a North Carolina State Government Department to, to do a presentation. So, so they came in and talked about, specifically about agriculture. And there are some counties that actually have initiatives underway right now to, to run broadband in, in these areas and even to hook it up to, to wifi. And, you know, a lot of these, a lot of this equipment can really, if it's, if it's got good connectivity, it can, it can control itself. But the jobs that it, it requires to, to operate, you, you may end up losing some, what, what you would call kind of manual labor, but it really, a lot of these guys are using, and some of them in Union County use them now, are hiring IT people to help with, with their, with their farms. I, I thought that was amazing.
It is, it is, you know, it's how it's going to be run. I mean, we're already used to having, you know, some robot, you know, cut our lawn, vacuum our carpets and things like that. So same thing applies here. These guys are literally running equipment. I know in, in some of my business dealings, I mean, I'm watching a guy standing on a mountaintop with a, almost like a big laptop strapped to his chest and he's running three or four pieces of equipment that could be as much of a mile away from him.
That's right, that's right.
In, in that whole process, when we talk about the infrastructure of, of that kind of communication stuff, is the county, does the county have a plan in place already to kind of garner some income from that as far as, you know, franchise fees and things like that with the, the end provider?
You, you mean as far as, as, as the broadband?
Right.
No, no, there is, there is, as far as I know, there is nothing in place right now. So that would be, that would be really starting from the ground up. That would, we would, we would have to fully create that. Of course, I mean, we, we wouldn't, there are examples in North Carolina, and there are communities that, that have already started this process. So we would likely look to them to see where their pitfalls have been and what's, what, where they have been successful. And the state of North Carolina does have a, a pretty good, it's a small department, but they do have resources that are available to help you develop broadband plans for rural areas. And there's actually money available, there's grant money available from the federal and state government to help you write those plans and then actually to help build it. That's, that's the, that's, that's the expensive part. But, but yeah, so there's, there's money available to do those things.
Yeah, it would certainly obviously be another stream of revenue for, for everyone, actually. The provider, which might be, you know, ABC Company, whatever it is, but certainly if, if we as a county are going to take on the initiatives, you know, that costs a lot of time, effort, and energy. And in some cases, our, our own crews might have to go out there and facilitate, you know, some of the underground, the fiber optic networks that have to be laid in to accomplish that.
Correct, yep.
Well, that's, that's great. I'm looking, I think I saw a hand go up, Mearprow Town.
No, it doesn't look like she had anything.
Any other, any other questions for the, for Lee from the commissioners? All right. Well, Lee, thank you very much, and we certainly look forward to, as you know, we're all trying to work together towards a CTJ. And we want to be able to make sure that we get, you know, we don't get left off the table on that because we, we impact each other everywhere we touch. As you can see on those maps, you know, we aren't a perfectly round or perfectly square or perfectly rectangular community here. We've got all these pockets all over the place. And I guess from my standpoint, I'd like to, I'd like to see those cleaned up in a, in a collaborative way and, and, you know, it'd benefit to everybody. So we appreciate that you're starting to share this if you haven't already, and certainly appreciate your connection with us, with our town manager who is our also planner and making sure that we get the input because we, we do have a significant amount of the growth here and we impacted a lot. And you're right, in, in the scope of how many people, you know, live here in Western Union County and then that travel out of the area for almost everything, that's a pretty significant number. You know, and we'd like to drag that back down. What's going to be interesting is watching where those areas meet the green, the rural areas, where you have the purple being, you know, you've got, we'll call it other than residential uses. That's going to be an interesting transition. And I'm hoping that we can inform people enough of the benefits of that and of the buffers that are going to be required. And it could be, you know, landscape parks, things like that, that could, that could really lend itself well to, you know, larger community development kind of effort. So appreciate that we're all talking these days. I hope to continue that.
I do, I do, I do too.
So if there, if there are no more questions, Lee will, will let you off the hook. Thank you again very much for presenting to us tonight. And if you could forward us that information up to our town clerk on what's coming up next, we'd certainly like to be participants in it. And if there are any presentations that the subcommittees are doing, since the next round of community meetings might not be towards the end of the year and towards the end of this process, we'd like to engage in some of those as well.
Sure, I'll certainly do that. And I appreciate you guys inviting me to participate today. And again, if you haven't already taken the survey, please go take it because we need responses. We want to hear from everyone.
Outstanding. Appreciate it. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Good to see you. All right, at this time, we're going to drop down to the public hearings. It's our no public hearings tonight. And so we're going to move on down to old business. And I see Matt was just up here a minute ago. There he is over there. Matt, I think you're up.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Have a, what I have tonight is an, an update and it's an update with an update and then it's a, a potential action item involving the, the TAP grant. And so can, can everybody see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So again, this is on the TAP grant and, and I'm, I'm pretty sure everybody's familiar by now. This started back in 2016 and it's been slow-going and Kurt last spoke on this in February where, where he gave his, his last update. And I just want to follow off that. We've got some, some changes and some updates. So now's the time to, to refresh. So the, again, just, just real quickly, the TAP grant was, was engaged to improve the downtown area specifically, and TAP is, is a transportation alternatives program. So it speaks to things that are specifically not vehicular related. They are pedestrian and bicycle enhancements. The, the overall goal was to enhance safety and, and pedestrian connectivity. We've also identified some areas in the park that needed to meet ADA compliance. And then finally, we, we did add on a component of the Main Street Pedestrian Plaza that, that tested very favorably and got support. So we've included a design there. And then finally, some bike safety issues. And we already had plans to do streetlights downtown. So we, knowing we were going to do a block that involved the streetlights, we, we, we have a component of that in the plan as well. So the, Kurt last spoke about the challenges that CSX provided and it was about over two years of, of coordinating our planning efforts with their requirements. Lost. There we go. Again, it was, we had permanent easements we were going to need in order to place sidewalks along the tracks. We also had to, to do a lot of legwork on the front end in terms of providing, paying for review fees for CSX administrative requirements, getting additional surveys and appraisals for their, for their parcel. In, in January, they gave us an update on, on what they expected the administrative cost to be around $114,000. I've since worked with them and brought those costs down to $70,000 because a lot of things either were, were artificially inflated with what they understood the project to be and some things we were able to work around. The easement costs at the time when, when Kurt had spoke were still not nailed down, but we had opinions ranging, and frankly, pretty scary from, from almost 200 to 400,000. We, we've gotten into the realm of reality and, and I've talked them down to about $31,000 in, in permanent easements is where we, we stand at the moment. And we would have engaged further to, to get this property in all the right of way in, in place when the next challenge came before us, and that's from DOT. So DOT, you know, early or midpoint of last year, they put a, a slow freeze on a lot of their projects because they dropped below their cash ceiling. And that's a, a regulatory mandate that they are not allowed to go below. As they were planning to, to move out of that over time, COVID came in and their, their gas revenues are sharply down. So they have halted every project that isn't already in construction. And if it's in construction, it's probably feeling a squeeze as well. But that specifically halts our TAP grant. We are not able to, to, to get out of right of way and we're not able to, to move toward construction phase. So right now, they're, they're being very cautious because before COVID, they were seeing light at the end of the tunnel. Now it's just getting darker and darker. From my understanding, well, what they're saying is if a Fed stimulus package comes out, then that money would immediately go to shovel-ready projects, which, which we are pretty much in that, in that top priority. But from what I understand, both the House and the Senate have their own stimulus bills and neither one are kind of wanting to cooperate with another. So my understanding is probably not till after the election would we get any kind of stimulus being approved from the federal government. The FAST Act is what they currently fund our transportation initiatives at the federal level with. That runs out in September. So in some format, they're going to have to put a Band-Aid on that, but I, I don't know that it's going to cover anything of this nature. And I do want to clarify going forward that these municipal agreements that we currently have in place for the grant, they're very sensitive. And so if, if you, if you don't meet any of their guidelines, they, they penalize you by, by almost taking all the money away. And, and so we have to be very careful to coordinate. And to that end, I had a meeting with, with 10 officials yesterday between the CRTPO and the DOT to, to review where we're at and where we could move forward, and, and it was very positive. So when I put the presentation together, I wasn't as positive. We had good feedback, but, but not total. Now I'm, I'm pretty positive the action items I'm going to present from here on out are all, are all well within our ability to, to do. So what I'm proposing to try and, and move this project forward sooner rather than later and continue the, the slow process that's been going on, you know, four years now and just having a design, is to break the project into two phases. Phase one would, would be specific to our imminent safety and connectivity needs that, that was really the purpose, to initiate the project in the first place. The second phase would be specifically the PED Plaza and any incidental improvements that, that were part of a good overall plan, but not necessarily the meat and potatoes, if you will. And again, at the time, I understood we would have to renegotiate the municipal agreement in order to, to allow us to take on this phasing strategy. And that appears not to, to be the case in, in talking with, with the officials yesterday. They think we can keep the agreement intact as it is, and all we would have to do is reduce the line item scopes. And, and that's all. So that's really good news and simplifies everything in terms of unknowns. I think everything will still be on the same regulatory footing. And again, what this has a potential to do is, is we would contract specifically as a local municipality with a, with, with the bidders and not have to go through all the, the very heightened and, and controlling federal contracting guidelines that, that add a lot of cost to administering and constructing these kinds of jobs. And we can do it at our own schedule. We don't have to continually ask for permission at each stage. We would basically be running the show and that has a lot of benefits in terms of time and, and dollars spent. So at this point, I will move over to the plan piece and show you exactly what I, I feel the phase one versus phase two would be. Are you all seeing the plan set now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, it's a little touchy. Try and go slower and not use the mouse because it's a little touchy, but hopefully, okay. So the first section that I've identified, and it's really just in order at the plan sheets are, is no particular order in terms of priority, but the, the block on McDonald's Street, right at the, the Broom Street intersection, I believe, should be included in phase one because it helps complete that block. It's, right now, it's only got sidewalk in front of the, the McDonald House and it stops at the tower. I feel we should, we should finish that connectivity and to, to provide a safe passage for people to not have to walk in the street. A lot of these things are, are knowing that Ardmore is about complete and we're going to see an increase in pedestrian traffic all the time, not just during events or, or particular hours, but we're going to see a lot more of pedestrian uses downtown. And so having complete connected segments between Ardmore and downtown is, is in my mind a necessity. I'm not including the portion of sidewalk along the community corner because there is already safe means to walk there behind the, the existing plantings. And so you have a buffer and, and those, those monies could, could better be spent in phase two. So the next section is, is along Broom Street, just south of Vivin Street. And again, it speaks to the need for connectivity. There's not
Matt, can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Can you just go back a slide? I want to make sure I understand what you're
I want to make sure I understand what you're, what you're showing.
Okay.
So this slide is what you're showing is putting in a sidewalk in front of the Dunkin' McDonald House out to Broom Street, correct?
Out to Broom Street, right.
Okay.
Along the, the south side of McDonald.
All right, yeah, in front, in front of the Dunkin' McDonald House.
Yeah, there's already sidewalk there, but this would complete it all the way out to Broom.
All right, got it.
Yeah, that's, the water tower is the, the first spot it starts at.
A question, quick question for you there too. So we put sidewalk, will it be on-street parking there?
Yeah, this, there would still be the parking, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Matt, go ahead.
Sure, no, I'm just waiting for the slides to advance. There's a little pause. And so again, this is, the, the second piece is the connectivity along Broom Street, south of Bivens, where again, there is no sidewalk currently. I think there's a retaining wall and, and, and a grass basically existing there. And then the, I think the driveway to, to our Parks and Rec Annex. And so this would all tie in that and have a safe place to walk along Broom Street. Again, for, for the pedestrians ideally coming from, from Ardmore or in that location back and forth. Then this next piece is specific to the downtown park. We have been aware that getting to the public restrooms in that area, you have to go downstairs. That doesn't meet ADA requirements. So phase one would be to, to, to be able to facilitate meeting ADA and getting anyone with strollers, anybody with, with, with difficulty walking down to the, the public amenity of the restrooms and into the park itself. Then one of the most critical pieces is, is this piece of East South Main. It begins where the sidewalk currently ends at the angle parking. Provide sidewalk around that. We were going to do a boardwalk around the tree, but that tree died. So it's just going to continue to be concrete and we'll put a parking space back in there as well. Then connects to the pedestrian bridge. That crosswalk at the pedestrian bridge and across to, to South Providence Street is one of our busiest pedestrian crossings and, and one of our most dangerous because of the high traffic. And there are times in the day when the sun's in the wrong spot, you can't see anybody crossing. And so a rapid rectangular flashing beacon has been planned there. It's a low cost, but high visibility option to improve the safety there. Again, it's, it's push-button controlled and would, would enhance. You know, again, right now we're just using flags. And then when those things are gone, it's just not an ideal setup. We, we've clearly outgrown that. But I would, as part of phase one, we would certainly need to have that in place sooner rather than later. Then the sidewalk will continue in order to facilitate the connection to, to the mill development. Again, another source of, of high pedestrian need and no connectivity to get them safely into, into town.
Matt?
Yes.
Before you go on, I have a question here. So at this particular crosswalk, if you go back.
Yes, I'm.
So this particular crosswalk, we will have some sort of flashing light or indicated to make the traffic stop for pedestrians?
Yes, yeah. And so again, they'll push a button. The, the indicators will, will begin flashing to notify vehicles. And, and this is shown to be very, very effective over, over other methods, but less expensive than, than a hawk beacon, which is almost akin to a, a traffic light. And those are, those cost about $100,000. This costs seven, seven to $10,000 and you get the same effect.
And then the other question I have specifically about this section is I know that we talked about with the roadway improvement here. And I know Commissioner Morey had made a good suggestion about if we took some of that angle parking over there and used that as a, as a turn lane. I mean, would that be impacted by this?
Yeah, I mean, this, this plan is, is pushing back sidewalk as far as we can push it back because of the, the PED bridge. So if, if there's an ability to do a turn lane, it's going to have to happen really within the existing real estate. We're, we're continuing to work on those options and nail down what, what are real feasible alternatives and what are not. But that one's going to be difficult either way. And the sidewalk really can't be impacted much more than this because of the, the change in elevations that you have from the street to the railroad crossing. You start to get pretty, certainly away from what you can do from, from ADA standards in the, in the room that we have available. But that would certainly be, be part of really incumbent on the design at 75 and 16 itself.
I, I guess my question would be if we put the sidewalk in, would we have to remove it or reduce it or change it or demolish it? If we, if we were able to do that option for a turn lane there for the road?
Yeah, no, I mean, it's pushed back as far as it can go. And so we're going to have to work with that constraint in, in the design. If, if a turn lane is, you know, again, the turn lane's already there going to the right. It's, it's a matter of getting the left turn lane in from the other direction. And we're, this, these aren't the biggest constraints. It's not a matter of moving the sidewalk. It's really a matter of moving either the buildings or, or not having the parking.
Matt, so in effect, it's going to have an impact on that parking that eventually we're going to lose. That was the whole basis for trying to create that other lane there.
Right, the parking in some format on either side of the road is, is the only thing that's, that, that can give. Everything else is kind of fixed between the buildings and the elevation of the railroad.
Maybe we just painted ourselves into a corner, but.
No, I mean, the, the paint was already there when we got here. This is just trying to complete the sidewalk that makes sense to put in. The, the roadway improvements are, are not, not that simple at all. And that's why we don't have a design right now that, that hits all the, all the high points.
Just a comment as we were talking last time about this. One of the things that we would need to solve for obviously is if we do reduce any of the parking in any of those areas, we would try to solve for it somewhere else, either south of South Main's buildings, somewhere back behind there on the side streets where we have both on Providence there that we could actually extend down the street there if we needed some extra parking. I think people would be okay actually if they had to walk from a side street rather than playing Russian roulette with the cars on the roadway, trying to come out of those angled parking spaces and cross the road. They hardly ever go to the crosswalk and then across. They usually dart across. I'm guilty as well if there's no traffic out there. But I, I think what I'm hearing both commissioners saying is that, and what you're saying, Matt, is that we are locked in physically, certainly on the south side by the buildings themselves and, and those sidewalks. And then on the north side, we're really approaching into as far north as we can go towards the right of way for CSX, is that right?
Yeah, and, and so, I mean, you can see on, on the, the plan view, the overhead view, you can draw anything however you want it. But when you go out and you look at it from the profile and look at the vertical, you run out of room quick. And, and that's, that's the problem we've got. And, and there's a couple of points there. As far as the parking, I wouldn't take any parking away that I don't put back anywhere else or increase somewhere else. There are options and they're all in the works, they're all in play. And so if, if, if a, if a plan comes before you from me that says I want to lose seven spaces, I'm going to give you seven spaces somewhere else. We know we can't take steps backward in that regard. The business is required. It's, it's, it's a non-starter. And then the other piece to this is that the solution to the traffic problem here is really the, the alternative routes we get in for, for the Parkway West and East. Once we're able to, to move those cars out of this way, and that might come sooner rather than later, maybe even ahead of a turn lane if, if things align up in, in other areas that we're working on. If you don't have the cars here, you don't have the need for all the lathe. And, and we can, the downtown only now serves destinations for people who want to be downtown and not as through movements for cars that have to get to the other side and are, are stuck kind of in, in the middle of it and everybody gets stuck there.
One commenter question, go back to that last slide. Sorry about that.
There, you're okay.
In the area where we have the angle parking and that little pocket on the east side of South Main, it looks like there might be enough to have, you know, you're going to lose if you did choose to lose those, what, six or seven spaces in there. It looks like there's enough room to parallel park, maybe three.
Sure.
So you're only having to solve for maybe three or four spaces somewhere.
Yeah, if, if, if it, if it comes to that. And, and again, that, that wouldn't require any major redo of the sidewalk per se. Maybe a couple, a couple of segments if, if that's the case. Again, there's not, with what's happening there between the PED bridge and, and the, I think there's the tree and it's got its little sprout. That, that area is about used what it can be used for. There's not a whole lot of means to, to really make a lot of changes that, that are very impactful.
Right. And the ADA challenge is on that south, what would it be? I guess the northeast corner of what we're talking about. So the ramping up from street grade up to the track. If we steepen that, that's the problem, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're certainly not going to be able. You, you have cross slope has to be 2% and then your running slope has to be no, no greater than 8% at a ramp. So we're losing that quickly. There's way more than that and you can't get that back without some sign of zigzagging. And, and it, it, it starts to be, certainly you're, you're talking about doing this all within CSX's right of way. And those costs, they don't go down. I think it's infeasible really from, from the start. The minute you look at the cross-section, that idea just goes right out the window.
Matt, is there, how does, how does the sidewalk interact with the bridges? Because I know when you come down the bridge, you kind of come down and then there's that planter. Does the sidewalk go in front of the bridge there or does it? I mean, I, it's hard to.
No, yeah, it's, it's before the bridge and the planter goes away.
So, okay.
Yeah.
So there's a walk, does the new proposed walk go in J-hook back underneath the bridge? Closer towards the tracks?
No, that, that can't be accomplished because of the, the supports that are on the bridge. And, and again, the slope, it's sloping down toward the tracks as, as, as well. And so all of those things kind of conspire to make that a, another non, non-starter.
Okay, anybody else? I can't see everybody on the screen, questions? Okay, continue on.
Thank you. And so again, this is just the final piece where connectivity to the mill is provided on the shoulder behind the guardrail to, to complete what we know has been one of the main focal points of, of the need here. And that's basically phase one. The, the other items in phase two are, are the PED Plaza and, and then some miscellaneous improvements to, to existing sidewalk that, that meets ADA, but is not, is really not as, as good as it could be. And, and we'd want to improve if we're bothering to do this kind of work at all. Okay. Yeah. Okay, so when we talk about the phasing concept, basically it, it ends up almost splitting the project in half. $225,000 for construction of phase one and some right-of-way cost from, from CSX. Those, the right-of-way is not reimbursable. It was not included in the grant. Phase two again would be about $225,000 in construction. That would remain 50/50 matching. And there's $14,000 of right-of-way that again would not be reimbursable. Again, all of this will come in a much more defined format if we agree that this is a direction we want to move in. We haven't put a whole lot of effort in, in crossing the Ts and dotting the Is because it, it takes time and money that, that we didn't have. But if, if we think this is a, is a direction worth moving in, then we would, I would be able to bring back much more detailed information before we were ready to, to, to go to bid.
Matt?
Yeah.
So just if I understand this, phase one would be the $225 plus $17,000? That would be our total cost for that?
Right. And, and the 17 is already, is already part of the overall. It's just split between phase one and phase two. So conceivably, I mean, again, we could buy all the right-of-way if we wanted to. It's just trying to, to keep our cash flow minimum so that we're only expending what cash we need to at any particular phase. And then we come back and, and recoup it or, or complete it in, in the second phase. So those costs, I've put them in there because they're not nothing. But they, we're going to be charged those dollars wherever we, in whatever format we complete the project.
So what you're saying is we decided to go ahead with phase one or out-of-pocket expense would be $242,000?
Right, right, yeah, just off the, the first round of, of estimates, yes.
Okay.
So these are some of the implications of, of phasing it. Technically, these funds are already in the project budget. And, and so it's not like we're, we're really looking to find extra money now. But they would not be subject to, to a 50% match. So the overall grant participation is, is going to, to be felt at the end of the day by not getting additional monies back from the state somewhere in the, in the neighborhood of $125,000. And then, so in order to, if we're talking about that's the worst-case scenario, we can, we can avoid that in a couple of ways. One is by reducing the scope of what we thought, think phase one should be. By any dollar we save in that scope goes back to a 50/50 match in phase two. So we have that ability. Again, there are other means at the end of the day to, to find those funds. Power bill reserve, these are all power bill eligible costs. Potential STP future revenues or the street lighting has $150,000 earmarked for it. So that in itself would cover this. We would just have to, since we don't have all the other blocks planned for construction, the need for that street lighting money to sit there is not necessarily doing us a benefit. So, so that's, I think, the, maybe the quickest means to, to address the funding if that's a direction we want to move in. So the schedule, again, the black is what Kurt presented. We were, we were stopped by, by CSX. Now that's done. We're through design phase, that's done. Right-of-way acquisition, we stopped when construction was stopped. So bid phase and construction phase are complete question marks at this point. The, the good news is, is certainly now that DOT has said we don't have to renegotiate the agreement. And there was certainly going to be a time window where that, working that out was, was, was going to eat up our schedule. Now, i- if that's not the case, we have the potential to, to put these plans together and go out to bid at our own timeframe, unencumbered by DOT or CRTPO. So because it's a smaller project, it's going to impact town less. And it's going to be done quicker. All, all good things, I think, in the long run. And certainly we'll, we'll have those items that were major concerns taken care of sooner rather than later. So the recommended actions, and they don't necessarily have to be made tonight. It's really just maybe a general thumbs up, thumbs down of what you're thinking is, is to either direct staff to, to proceed with this course and scope or discuss wanting to reduce that scope. We can do that now or in two-by-twos or in a work session. Or to, to say, you know, it's, it's a, it's a great idea, but we prefer keeping the, the grant intact and, and are willing to, to see what the schedule ends up being. Because again, in the. Because again, in the long run, CSX and DOT are still players in this game and we don't know. In good faith, we can proceed in all this and they still stymie our efforts as we continue to try and make moves. And then I think the biggest caveat is that we can go ahead and proceed with phasing. We can change the plans, we can create our bid documents and put it out to bid. But we are not obligated to spend those monies until the bid is opened, they're put in front of the board in a public hearing and the board decides to either execute that contract or decide, no, we don't want to do it. And that decision doesn't have to have a reason. And so even if it is that funds have now become available or we find the bid comes in too high and we don't like the number, we can pull the plug and fall back on the overall grant in its entirety with no real penalty, just in lost time in terms of resources spent to go ahead and bid it.
Jeff, I mean, Matt, I'm sorry. I don't necessarily have any questions per se. I really like the idea and the concept of phasing it. I think given this uncertain time with NC DOT and the TAC grant and who knows what their timeline, the, for us to look at possibly funding this, I mean, it's just sort of indefinite having to wait for the funds. I think this is something that's much needed overdue. I would like to explore option one and phasing it ourselves. I would like to maybe have Jeff and Rosemary kind of look it over and maybe give us an idea where those funds could come from or how we would go about financing it. I also would like to get maybe from you an idea of what's the timeline, like how? I mean, I just feel like we've talked about this for years and I like to see something tangible or at least have our residents see something tangible of us making some improvements with the connectivity to our downtown area.
Right. And so a couple of things, one, the plans are done. So there's not much more legwork besides just breaking out the quantities and refining, redlining the plans to show exactly what is part of the project and what's not. And then it's a matter of putting the contract, big documents together following the public bidding process, which will take a couple of months. And so I would, I would hope by late summer, early fall, we have the bid out and ideally be able to start construction before the end of the year. Because of this area, whether it's not, we're not dealing with a money site per se. It's easy to access. So winters being what they are, you know, assuming it's not as wet as last year, which that's, you know, that's a typical year, we could be able to get this work done and on the other side of New Year's, see it out of the way. Again, all that clarity will come forward in better detail as we start to fill in the blanks and move forward. The good news is my new engineer starts on Monday and so that will provide the ability for me to get back to full capacity. And so that certainly is a plus and able to do it without having to encumber consultant fees and things that add cost to bringing it forward.
And just another question, like, so if we were to go into construction, we'd wait till after the holiday season? I know that's like a big time for our downtown, but with COVID, you know, it's kind of, we don't know what to expect at that time of the year, but I would want to make sure that that wouldn't be hindered, anything that we could possibly do for activities for the holidays.
Yeah, and again, I mean, the contractor makes money the less amount of time his forces are mobilized. So the scope of this is pretty cut and dry. It's working in already graded areas. They're pulling out some stuff, then they're setting up forms and then they're finishing the concrete. There's not a whole lot of complicated things. We're not going deep underground like we are on the other, the Ped Plaza. And so this, this is really some slim, some low hanging fruit. I think the biggest issue is going to be DOT and the traffic volumes and are they going to make this be night work? And the scope being what it is, I'll make a case that it shouldn't. But again, those are the kinds of things that have yet to be really nailed down, but could certainly impact what we want to do. And like I said, we'll be able to go in with much more detail as, as we develop the bid documents and get the planning all together to be able to answer these questions in much, much better, much more concrete terms.
Sure, and my final question is, is that I would like to know what we're going to do to repurpose those signal flags when we cross the street?
They'll probably be gone. They have a tendency of walking away. So I imagine there's, those flags are in a lot of kids' rooms right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So it looks like no questions on there. So Matt, what you're looking for from us tonight is basically some consensus. If you could back up one screen for me. And so we can, we can take and give you some direction to proceed, you know, with the course and scope that we have right now. On our agenda item, we have basically two options. But it seems to look like, you know, we want to keep going forward. And I don't, you know, I don't know that I'd want to say that we're going to take no action and continue to weigh it on NC DOT. I think we have too many responsibilities to our citizens and visitors down in that area. So from my standpoint, anyway, I would make a comment that, you know, we continue to move forward. And I'd like to hear any comments from the rest of the board members.
I'm comfortable with moving forward.
Yes, I'm also comfortable moving forward with phase one. I think it's time that we start getting this project started. The design started before I was even on this board. So I would like to see something and I think we need to remember our vision of making the downtown pedestrian friendly and anything that we can do for that would be helpful.
I agree with Commissioner Westlick and Lori.
Very good. Well, I think with that, Matt, you got, I see Jeff's got his hands up, sorry buddy.
Mayor, I would just make the suggestion, if the council wanted to or commissioners wanted to give direction to staff that you do so in directing staff to proceed as option one there with the course and scope of the work. And that would also include your town manager and finance director figuring out how to pay for this course and scope of work.
I appreciate that. I think, I think we're all working towards that same goal. So, you know, with this, I don't see or hear any comments to the contrary. So I thank all of you, Matt and Jeff, you have your marching orders here with consensus from this board.
Great.
I guess, do you need something official, Jeff?
Probably not at this point. I think this direction is good. Once we come back with more details that would require more specific voting.
Okay, we're good. Well, I appreciate that. Congratulations on Matt. Thank you very much for working that. I know, you know, all your friends at CSX and NC DOT are just happy to see you come through the door every day. So, you know, just let them, bring those flags over to them this time. Let them go take their chances out there.
Well, I can't wait. I wonder if their hair on their arms is standing up and what their response is going to be if I try and actually get something done here.
Well, I, well, appreciate the effort. Don't give up and we will do everything that we can to support those efforts going through. And maybe it's a shakedown of maybe some vending machines that we have out somewhere and shake down some coin for you. So we'll try to provide that. And I know town manager and the finance director will certainly look to see if we can facilitate. So appreciate that. If there are no more, any more questions for Matt, we'll move to new business, which isn't any. So.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. So since there's not any items on the new business side, I'm going to move back up to the general public comments and going to ask the town clerk to read into the record a comment by one of our citizens.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we received a comment from Jane Gapper. She lives at 4101 Spreading Oaks Court. It was a rather lengthy comment. So to get it in in three minutes, there was a section in the middle related to resources. So I'm just going to summarize that part. So the beginning of the statement is, "I write to you as a college educated white woman who believes that I have regarded all people equally. I thought of myself as one of the good ones, a person harboring little bias and receptive to blacks and people of color. Imagine that that's how you see yourself too. That's why you choose to serve the public. The Black Lives Matter movement in June 2020 jolted me out of my apathy and white centered thinking and launched me into examining what I really thought and believed about race and blacks and how very, very little I considered black people's reality. Soon I learned about my apathy and how my silence has been just as powerful. I've lived in Waxaw for 18 years. I've served on steering committees and attended years of town meetings. I do appreciate your service and willingness to listen and lead. I am sending this letter to urge the board, the mayor and town manager to make a radical leap in your leadership when the present day call to be fair and just with black lives is loud and clear. Do not be quick to dismiss the need to evaluate the claim that nothing is wrong in Waxaw. Instead, learn what it means to be anti-racist personally and as a leader. There is no danger or threat in exploring what it means to be anti-racist. Don't ask a black person to tell you you're okay. Do your own work." As quoted in The Guardian, US historian and anti-racism activist Ibram Kendi says that "when you are accustomed to privilege, equality feels like oppression. You already believe equality of opportunity exists. So instead, you're going to reframe equal opportunity as an assault against you, you and your livelihood. Please don't fall into thinking that to discuss anti-racism is an attack or threat to your way of life or that Waxaw will be upended and chaos may occur. Quite the opposite will happen. So learn what anti-racism means to you personally and how it will affect and empower your leadership in the town of Waxaw. While it may take energy and consciousness to do so, I urge you all to begin by educating yourselves." And then this is the place where some resources were provided. Our members were already provided these comments. So I'm going to skip down to sections. "Please don't hide behind uninformed, unexamined good intentions during this historic civil rights movement. Keep in mind that you play a key role in leading Waxaw and the community at large. Notice that Waxaw Police Patrol Officers are all white unless the website profile hasn't been updated. Examine the racial makeup of Waxaw Administration and Human Resources. Craft and implement anti-racism policies. Be courageous. Examine the status quo in hiring and personnel development in Waxaw. Yes, that means examining Waxaw's white centered community thinking and policy. Waxaw has much to gain. Respectfully, Jane Gapper." And that's the end of the comment.
Okay, very good. Thank you for reading that. And to the submitter to give that to us. I appreciate that a great deal. Okay, with that being read and that was the only one that we had on the general public comments, we'll move down to the town leadership reports. So at this time, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Jeff Wells, our town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three short points to share with you this evening. And the first one is really kind of a follow up to Lee Jensen's presentation and the discussion on ETJ. And this is, this is just for the public's awareness too. And we received as a town notification from the county that they would, that they would not consider our request for ETJ or extratorial jurisdiction, which would be zoning and subdivision control in those said donut holes at this time. The town had requested that the county consider allowing us to acquire the ETJ in that, in that area. They will hold off that consideration until they finish their comprehensive planning process. And then as I understand it, depending on how their comprehensive planning process ends up, then they would go back to whether they would consider ETJ from municipalities in general. Certainly ours would be part of that. So that's one point. Point number two is the 2020 census counts are continuing through October 31st of this year. This is just a reminder for anybody out there to fill out your census forms. You can respond by accessing computer links that are usually provided to you in mailers. And also you can participate by phone this time. And if you've not participated to this point, you may indeed receive a house visit from a census field worker between now and October. So just a heads up there. Additional facts and outreach resources can be found on North Carolina's Census website, which is census.nc.gov. And lastly, we are ready to go live on the website with our draft land development code. You probably recall at our last meeting, I gave you a little sneak peek of what that would, what that would look like. And the land development code would ultimately replace the Unified Development Ordinance or UDO if it is adopted. We would also be revising our future land use maps and zoning maps. And as the public will be made aware of that by it being available on our website. And then I'll be working the rest of this week with our communications staff to make sure that the word gets out appropriately to visit our website. We certainly hope, and of course, this will be based on the governor's executive orders moving forward. We do want to do some more in-person public input if we can. Another round of open houses with a lot of interaction there, maps if we're able to do so. We're hoping to do that in the late summer or early fall around the time that the Board of Commissioners would do their formal review or begin their formal review of the land development code. At the bottom of the page, when you click on it online, when it becomes available, there will be an opportunity for the public to write their comments in, ask questions, however they see fit. And that will go straight to our planning staff who then can engage with those people that may have questions or comments. And certainly we would expect that as this process moves forward, not only with the review from the planning board and from the Board of Commissioners and also ultimately our attorney would also review it, but certainly would have some opportunity for changes based on input from the planning board, from the Board of Commissioners and ultimately the public as well. We certainly feel real good about where we are and we're looking forward to getting into what we hope will be the stretch run of this process. So that's just an FYI to be on the lookout for that later this week. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I just want to add to that as well. We're certainly going to continue to be as influential as we can with the county and their planning efforts around us in the donut holes and in other areas, even though, you know, we'd like to have had this ETJ a little bit farther along in the process, but we certainly understand that we might be a little bit ahead of their process. And I think that we've all been able to, you know, in a good way, contribute to their efforts. So we will, as a, as a leadership and certainly in the town manager slash planning director's role, he's going to be right next to their efforts in the county for planning. So all is not lost with a little bit of delay. So appreciate, appreciate you continuing to develop and nurture that relationship. I think it's important for all of us to appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, with this, actually, I see you, the lady with the green screen behind her. So our Parks and Recreation Director, Gina Samensky. Gina, you're on. If you unmute yourself, there you go.
Hello, all.
Hi, welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Always takes me a minute. All right, here we go. And we're gonna go over some park and rec updates. We are into our program guide for this coming up summer, so we're doing a little bit different than we've done in the past because of COVID. We're only doing three months at a time, so we're going to September, but we are starting some in-person programming, but going through all the protocols for COVID to make sure that our citizens and our staff are safe. Tomorrow morning, we actually have our Fun Days in the Park at Barnes Park, and it's Bubble Day. We already are full. We do our registration through Rec Desk, and you can find that link online on our website, but we only can take up to 25 participants per program day. So at this moment in time, we are full, so sign up for our next one, that is on June, July the 22nd, and we're having the Union County Nature Van coming out. Mr. Seth is gonna do some nature talks with us, and we're gonna go on an adventure walk to the Suspension Bridge. We also started a health and wellness program with walking twice a week. So come join Ms. Amy on Tuesday and Thursday mornings, and we meet up at the McDonald House, and we basically do a big loop of our downtown. Takes about 30 to 45 minutes. Again, social distancing, wearing our mask, all of our protocol taking place, but it's a good way for us to get outside and get that health and wellness started. Something that's dear to my heart, it's art, and we are doing a pottery program with partnership with Ms. Kristen at Eight Legs Gallery, and that's coming up at the following week. Again, all these programs are on our Rec Desk, online, on the website. Future programming coming up, we have teen program, adult program, youth programs, and we're gonna attempt to do a senior coffee program as well. And with our limitations on our inside guests, that means there's smaller group sizes, so if you would like to participate, please go ahead and sign up as soon as possible, and that way, we can make sure we have our numbers correct, and if we need to have more programs set up, we can provide that. July is National Park and Rec Month, so the National Society actually has lots of activities on their website, and this is their promotional for Park and Rec Month. So we're going to start highlighting, especially some of our wonderful staff, our citizens, and kind of what we do, because I'm very passionate about park and rec, as you all know, and I want to express that to our community with open arms of them participating with us, even if it is limited. As always, we do our best to partner with our local businesses, artisans, culinary artists. So if you have an idea for a program, please contact us. We would love to hear about it and love to partner with you. So with the governor having his press conference this afternoon, we found out that we're gonna stay in Phase Two for the next three weeks. So that takes us to August 7th. So all these protocols are gonna stay in place until we have more guidance from the governor's office on what the next stage is. So we're still gonna stay with the mandatory mask while we're out, and all the protocol is staying on play responsibly. The checkmarks are still open, all those places, but we are doing modified and limited on athletic practices and camps, and some outdoor rentals only. It is really challenging to do any indoor rentals at this time, just because of the current protocol. And always, I leave you with our mission and vision, and if you have any questions.
Any questions from the commissioners all around? We seem safe today. Yes, we did get a little bit of a notice from the governor this afternoon. We'll watch that call, I'm sure, so that's definitely gonna affect, you know, the activities. Curiosity question is, how have the parks been utilized? I mean, I know the skate park seems very busy sometimes, and I haven't always been able to get out in the middle of the afternoon, so do we have full parks, half-full parks? What's it been looking like?
We're pretty full. We have lots of people using the trails. The Trails is actually the most popular. The one at Town Creek going into the Prescott community, as well as at Nesbit going into the Mill Bridge community, going to the Suspension Bridge. I mean, extremely, like, there's always somebody on it. And of course, we have all of our informational signs up to express the social distancing and the wearing of our masks, so that's one of our highest utilized amenities. The skate park is pretty up there. Our youth, because of a lot of the camps, sports camps, and a lot of our traditional camps where they would go at are not taking place at this time, they don't have a place to go. So it is very challenging, because we're constantly cleaning up and making sure that we're keeping the environment safe, but it's hard for me as a recreational person and a mom to... I want to meet their needs. So it's one of those things that recreation is having a challenging time right now, trying to figure out safe, healthy ways to meet our citizens' needs. But our park system is being utilized 100%.
Are you running into any, if any, resistance to these mandates?
They don't like the playground being closed down. We kindly ask people that are on it to... We can't be on it right now. We have the signage up. We don't have a guard there, and we don't have the capability of having guards there. We can only educate, and that's a big portion of what we're doing, is just educating the public and being sympathetic and having that empathy, because, you know, as much as I struggle with it, they're struggling with it as well. So we're trying to figure out new ways. I mean, since we started the Fun Days last week, Amy had, you know, like, a couple moms are like, you know, like, bless you for getting... You know, we need to get out. You know, they're like, they want a safe cocoon, but they still need that avenue to get out. So we're investigating tons of ways to virtually do stuff, but also in-person but not in-person. So a lot of our partners in the park and rec world of North Carolina, I talk with them probably once a week on a conference call, Zoom thing, and there's some really innovative ideas. I mean, we... One lady talked about senior bingo today, but she had them under a tent, they were spaced out, she made it happen, right? And so are the movies, drive-ins, concerts, drive-ins, and things like that, and doing the 10-foot circles. So we're investigating all these avenues to safely bring the public together, but understanding that I'm a big health and safety nut, and so I'm gonna be really cautious. I am cautious, but knowing that our citizens are craving and just, they're in need, they're in need of this, of having positive recreation.
It is, and it'll probably get a little bit more interesting as we go down now another three weeks to have these in place, and I certainly understand them, and, you know, we want to keep it safe. We don't want to be the one that opens up the floodgate and they'll literally drown in the water there. We want to make sure that everybody's safe, so appreciate that. I'm sure it's kind of tough for everybody to sit there, and, you know, they can't walk forward, they can't walk sideways, they can't do something, because we've got a restriction on them, and, you know, a lot of them are younger, and so they really don't understand what we could potentially be up against, but it seems like the guidance coming down from this afternoon is gonna keep us in this position for a while. Quick question, when you say we have maybe some, we'll call them violators, into the playground equipment area, I'm guessing that we're spraying that down just because sometime, somehow?
So right now, we spray all the common touched areas weekly, and to periodically through the week, it's not daily, but it is weekly. And so we are still doing that, but we're working on signage to help out, educate about high-touch areas as well, and that people are, our citizens are responsible citizens, and they are responsible for their own health and wellness as well. So I'm not in a position to take that away from them. They are responsible for themselves, and so...
Good protocol.
It's on them.
Appreciate that. So any questions, comments from any other commissioners, or anybody else around the board up here for our PRD, as we call you affectionately? All right, well, appreciate that. Dina, thank you, and again, welcome back.
Yeah.
We'll just manage through another couple of three weeks here.
We're all gonna, we're in it together.
Great, appreciate that. All right, I'm gonna back up one step. I understand that we have one more town leadership report from our engineer Matt, so is he still on there? Is that what I'm seeing? Did he disappear? Somebody go wake him up. There he is.
Ta-da.
There you go, back again.
Are you guys still here?
We're still here. The floor and the screen are yours, sir.
Thank you. I couldn't let you get a have last word, clearly, but I did have an item that I wanted to address real quick, because it's gonna impact town next week. We're trying a really innovative program in road maintenance, something more higher level than preventative maintenance, but not as costly and impactful as milling out and repaving. And so I'm hoping, it's a pilot project that we're doing with Public Services, they're actually providing the manpower, and we're just putting down the material and renting the equipment. It's something called Liquid Road. It's akin to what you might see on driveways and parking lots, that you seal it to prolong the life of an asphalt pavement, but those take, you know, six hours or more to dry. This takes a couple hours, and so it's functional for a public access format, and I believe Nick has a quick little video that shows how neat and interesting this product is, and we'll show that, just so you get a feel for it. So again, you can see the condition of the street is fatigued and it's cracked sealed, and then you come through with this machine, and it lays down, at the end of the day, it's about a nickel-thick emulsion that rejuvenates the asphalt, and it smoothes out the road, and it makes it look shiny and new, all for a fraction of the cost of what our current traditional methods are. So I'm really hoping that this works well for our application and can really stretch our dollars, our power bill funds, a lot further, because we do have 62 miles of road that we maintain, and we're not getting very far with the traditional method, so we'll never keep pace with the process that pavements age and fatigue and fail at versus the dollars we have available to spend on them. So that's a quick little summary of what's going on, and then I'll show you the map that I have of the areas that we're gonna hit next week, just so everyone is aware. One of the biggest concerns is maintaining access for the residents in those areas, because it does take two hours to dry, so we have to be very mindful of that, and I think that's one thing the Public Services Department is very concerned about, and so we're gonna have a lot of personnel out there, not involved with the operations, but just making sure people are well-informed and are able to understand that they can't drive across this until it's done. And so the areas, day one is South High Street and Lynn Street, and a little bit of Sharon Drive. Day two is Bancroft Circle and Ashton Manor. Day three is finishing up Poplar Grove Circle. We did a lot of paving repairs because they were so bad. Now we're gonna finish it off, so it all looks black and smooth like it should. Same thing with Harrison Park Drive. And then finally, day five is Arbor Drive, and again, that's weather permitting, but we hope that this is gonna be really successful, and it's worth the effort and the resources that Todd has been willing to provide for us. And so I wanted to get this out ahead. We're gonna start notifying the residents in that area this week, that next week, we're gonna be coming through and to make arrangements to be able to get in and out of your house during those hours. Any questions?
No, that's a good system. Sealing, you know, those asphalt surfaces are so protective. Yeah, they cost a little bit of money, but digging it out, repaving, all that, there's just so much more. I know in my life, on the West Coast, I mean, we constantly did that. In fact, it was almost on a two- to three-year cycle, where we filled in all the cracks and then ran over the sealant over it, extended the life of the streets by probably fourfold. So it's a good system. So how do we get introduced to that?
Well, we've been trying a lot of different means. We tried a different form of it a year or so ago, where it was just a rejuvenator, and all it did was really add some more chemicals back into the asphalt to give it more life, but it didn't do the smoothing out that you see here. And so, again, it was proprietary, a salesperson answered one of our requests, and then we've been able to hook up directly with the manufacturer, and that's made it a lot cheaper, because, again, we're getting cost savings of 50% over if we were contracting this out. And not to say that we'll do this all the time, but we did want to get really well-experienced with it, so that we'll be able to run contracts a lot better and know what the pitfalls are, rather than just sending a guy out there and finding out whether they can do the job well, to the standard that we would want to have done within town.
Generally speaking, just out of curiosity, what are the costs today for that? Say on a, you know, 50-foot right-of-way, you got a 30-foot pavement, what's the running cost on that? Do you recall?
In terms, are we talking about comparison of the seal coat versus traditional paving?
No, just not the differences, but what are the raw costs of running that sealant across there?
Right. So, yeah, what we're doing for all these roadways, it's, I want to say it's 16,000 gallons of product at a spread rate of, I think, and you don't really care about the spread rate, but for these streets, we're paying about 60 grand, and that really, that would be comparable to mill and pave of one or two of these streets total.
Right.
So there is, and again, you want to get to the street before it gets so bad, and that's not something we've been able to do yet, but we've got to find a happy medium between, do we spend all the money on the roads that are really bad and not have enough to do the preventative maintenance, or can we try and get ahead of the curve, do this preventative maintenance, so we don't have to have the worst-case scenario every time?
Well, I'm certainly for preventative maintenance, because I am one who has seen the result of that, and it does save you a great deal of money. Again, you're not digging the street out, and it... And if you're right, if you get out there ahead of it before it starts checking real bad, then your ability to seal it becomes more effective. So I think it's a great move. I think certainly it will give us a lot of fresh looking streets in a short order of time.
Yeah, I'm hoping this will be the new normal.
No, that's excellent. That's good to hear.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our town engineer across the board? All right. Well, you've escaped us successfully again. So appreciate that.
Sorry to keep you up so late.
Oh, not a problem. You know, I wasn't running for the record anyway. So thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
All right. All right. We'll move down to any comments or thoughts from our Board of Commissioners. And, you know, we've had a busy day with a lot of things. Certainly, we've heard from the governor again today and we'll probably have a lot of questions and things from our constituents on what's going to happen, even though, you know, we all know that we don't necessarily manage the school district or the boards or anything like that. But what, any comments from any of our commissioners tonight? It's quiet. No, it is late. We all want to go home. I love it. So anyway, we have a lot of work to do and we've been very successful on a few fronts in the last few weeks. So I appreciate all of you hanging in there and, you know, contributing. It's, it's certainly well noticed. They get a lot of comments, again, from some of the staff on how active we all are with this community and with our town staff and the leadership of the town staff. So hopefully we can continue to do that. And I appreciate all of you stepping up to the role. It's, it's noticeable in more fronts than you will ever imagine. So unless there's any other comments, I will ask for someone to put up the motion to adjourn our meeting. I have a motion.
So move.
So move. Roll call vote. Commissioner Morey.
Aye.
Commissioner Westlick.
Aye.
Mr. Simpson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem.
Aye.
Very good. Well, thank you all again. Have a great evening and night and be safe wherever you're traveling to. And we'll be in contact all week. Be good, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Have a great night.